Hi, everybody. Can you can you hear me? Can we turn off some of these microphones?
Hear you, but you're soft.
Okay, I just want to make sure we get feedback in here. Okay. I apologize for the tech.
Yes, someone's still got microphones.
Lance, can you please turn off the sound up there? On the TV, all the TVs.
Okay, we good? No.
Christian is still on somewhere up there.
That sounds like it might work. Nope, we still have feedback. The mics are off. Can you turn off the TVs? Okay, let's try it now. We'll have to turn it on when when the it's public time. Okay, can you hear me now? Someone let me know, please.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We apologize for the delay. We had some technical issues over here getting the the camera and everything working as you, as you can imagine, our second time doing this. We were spoiled with the first one moving smoothly through a meeting. So we are all sitting here in the middle school library. As you can see, we all have masks on, which is slightly different than the last time we met. And just to backtrack, we already did take roll and we'd already did the pledge and we have already approved the minutes from last meeting. So before I start with my remarks, I would like to welcome Chris Hegel to the meeting, first time in person. Our new business administrator, as as he knows and everyone else knows, he's got some pretty big shoes to fill. So we welcome him and wish him well, obviously, on in his tenure here in Warren. And as I mentioned, you know, you can see we're all wearing masks, which we did not have on the last time, and this is a direct result of the executive order that was issued by the governor's office, requiring us to wear masks as well as the kids as they come back to school. Obviously, there is a this is a contentious issue. There are a variety of opinions as to whether or not we should be wearing masks, or especially the kids, whether or not they should be wearing masks. Within our own community, we have feedback for those that don't want the kids to wear masks as well as those that do. We have differences within the board and our committees regarding opinions on masks. So there is an agenda item before which is going to ask for approval to send a note to the governor saying that we don't want a statewide mask mandate, but instead something that has protocols for the local districts to be able to make their decisions based on metric data, which the current executive order does not allow. And we think we've got a pretty good policy in place that that would work in under that circumstance. Within, as you, as many of you may or may not know, there are states where the governors have mandated that no masks are to be permitted or to be mandated in any school districts. And we have school districts that are within those states that are fighting against those governors because they want masks. And we're having the same. We're having similar issues here in the state where the governor has mandated masks and you have districts that are saying we don't want them and they're fighting again. So you have things going both ways on this. The town of Wayne just recently approved. And it was a split, I believe it was a four three vote that they approved sending the letter to the governor saying that they don't want the mask mandates. And almost immediately after that was approved, parents within Warren, a separate set of parents within within Wayne, sorry, started a petition saying that they wanted the masks to be mandated and they were in support of the governor's decision. So I think I guess the only real certainty out of this whole thing is that someone is not going to be happy with the outcome of whatever this is. You know, we obviously would encourage the governor to spend a day in the schools with his mask on to act as either a student or a teacher and to see how he survives the day. But, you know, that's that's up to him. So I just want to say that, you know, obviously, we're going to be discussing this issue in a few minutes. There are no right answers here. We are certainly going to apply abide by the the laws of the state and and move forward in that regard. Okay, that's all I have on that subject. And then today I was fortunate enough to be at the welcome ceremony for our new staff this morning with Dr. Mingle and Mr. Kimmick and the school principals. And it was nice to see the new faces coming into the well, half faces coming into the the school district for the new year. So where I was very happy to welcome them to the school district. I think Dr. Mingle, floor is yours. Okay, do you want to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franco. Just a couple of quick comments from me. We have some feedback in the room. We're just clearing that. Okay, great. So just to reiterate what Mr. Franco said, we had a great first day of new staff induction today. Thank you to Mr. Heaney and Mr. Cook, who took care of organizing the new staff induction program. We are fully staffed and ready for the first day of school next Wednesday, so we're happy about that as well. I know people have been concerned about some things they might have seen in the news, but we are fully staffed and ready to go. I also want to thank Mr. Pate, who is our supervisor of buildings and grounds, as well as the Warren Township Committee and the Warren Township Police Department for providing us access to the parking lots across the street tonight. For our in-person participants, they know that our parking lots are under construction. PD was very responsive today in helping us with traffic control devices and things like that. For our in-person attendees, if it's dark when the meeting ends, we do have custodial staff with flashlights to help us get back across the street. So we have a way to get there safely. Again, thank you to Mr. Paper helping make all that happen. Item A four, I just want to mention, which is our annual curriculum adoption. Thank you to Mr. Kimmick, Ms. Medunio, and all of our teachers who help with annual curriculum revisions. And I think that's it for me on my report. Looks like we're back up on the main screen for the presentation. So let me just check in with our our tech staff to make sure I get that right.
One thing I did want to mention that I forgot to mention also, so there was a survey that was released today by Monmouth University, I don't know if you saw that, saying that about sixty seven percent of respondents to their survey were in support of the governor's executive order to have masks in schools, which I found interesting, but yeah, I thought that's a pretty clear majority.
Mr. Rieger, what's the best way for the presentation? Is the microphone going to pick up or should I? Show my screen on that screen so the people can hear. You have to give me permission, Mr. Rieger.
We apologize again. We'll we'll get this all worked out, make sure it's working for the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Yep, I'm muted. Okay, I have a brief return to school update from our slides from the July nineteenth meeting a month ago, just to highlight the changes that have taken place over the last month or so. The goal remains the same and the vision remains the same that as of next Wednesday, September first, we'll have returned all one hundred percent of our students and staff members for their traditional full-length school day in our school facilities. As I mentioned last month, this first slide here is what it looked like a month ago, where we got updates from the governor in late June from the State Department of Education and the State Department of Health. We engaged in our internal return to school process and with our local health official. As everybody who had children in summer fund and E S Y knows, we removed our mask requirement on July fifth and then the travel exclusion a week later, based on the guidance that was in place at those times. And on July nineteenth, we were here and updated the board on our plans for September, which included a continuum of action based on the conditions. In the last month since then, we have received updated guidance on August sixth from our local health department, the county health department, the CDC, and our school physician. The next day on August seventh, the governor issued executive order two five one, which is the mask requirement that mandates masks. On August twentieth, which is just last Friday, for those keeping score, the Department of Education and the Department of Health issued new guidance to school districts for the coming school year. It is relatively small in the changes, so it's not something that changes anything in really the presentation other than the masks. And here we are on August twenty third updating the board on those plans for September. And for those parents, be aware, we do have a parent information session on Thursday that will be recorded and sent out to all parents in the community on Thursday afternoon. If you can't be there live, when you register, the link is in the last community briefing. There's also a link at the end of this presentation tonight. When you register, it gives you the option to pose questions, if you have questions after this presentation or about anything else related to the return to school process. There's a way to submit it so that we answer it on Thursday. We can, you know, do our research between now and Thursday and be ready to answer those questions for you. So the overview, as I always say, these slides are based on the currently available guidance. Although I don't have any reason to think that the governor or the state will be making changes between now and next Wednesday, I can't promise you that. There was a press conference today that changed vaccine requirements for school employees. So at any point in time, there could be changes. Obviously, if the guidance changes, then we have to respond to that as well. The CDC does recommend basing their plans on the local community transmission. As I announced last month, we did come up with what I think is a pretty good plan that follows the local community transmission and then ups the mitigation. Where permitted, that exists still, but on things like masks, we are not permitted to do that right now. So you'll see that in the presentation. I did think it might be good to update you on where things are in our community right now. So this is a chart that you will see this year on Thursday, community emails. It takes what is called the COVID nineteen activity report. It's published by the state every Thursday. It lags by a week. And it puts us into one of four categories. The current status for our county, which is combined with Hundred and Mercer Counties for this purpose, is moderate risk. You'll see the case rate is in the high-risk range and rising. The percent of COVID-like illness is in the moderate range and rising. And the percent positivity is in the moderate range and falling. That's week over week for our most recent update. So that puts us in the moderate risk operating status, which is full days of in-person learning. That's no matter what the risk is, as close to pre-pandemic norms as possible with increased cleaning. And now the new line there in bold, masks required under all four, under the current executive order. So there's no change from one week to the next. This is the kind of document that parents can get, can start to think about seeing each week as we go into the new school year. The other thing I wanted to point out is this is what the curve looks like, which I published every Thursday last year as well. The the reason our public health officials are concerned is that the curve, this is in our in our Somerset, Hundred and Mercer Counties, is rising right now in the middle of the summer, and it didn't happen last summer. Last summer, the curve did not go up until the fall. So they're very concerned that it's happening now while people are still outside with eighty plus percent of adults vaccinated in our local community, that the curve is going up now is a concern where it went up last year in the fall. Whether that continues or not, we have, obviously, we can't predict, but that's why there's so much concern and why you're seeing things changing at the state guidance level. And then in our local community, as of this morning, Warren Township only is what the data on the screen right now is. We have already matched last month's COVID cases in Warren Township with another eight days to go. July, over last July, almost three times as many cases. This is why our local health officials are concerned as well. So with adults being primarily vaccinated or mostly vaccinated, you're seeing younger and younger individuals showing up on these lists. The school data has not been updated throughout the summer, obviously, because we're not getting that information because students aren't in school right now. So that's sort of the context. And then just a quick update on the plans and what has changed. Every every if it's in bold, it is changed. It is a change since our July meeting. So masks are now required for all students and staff in facilities and on school buses, regardless of vaccination status. Hand hygiene occurs at all levels. The reason that's bolded there is that at certain levels, there's hand washing versus things like opportunities for sanitizing. Obviously, hand washing is our preferred method, making sure that that is taking place. The other change since we met last month is that the daily screening form will be used under all four levels based on the current recommendations from our health officials. Given the concern in the community, there's a feeling that we need to know immediately the day of if there are symptoms popping up in different schools or among our staff. On the facility side, only change here is that the sharing of materials information stays the same once we get to moderate risk. And we are our indoor, sorry, excuse me, our outdoor airflow at a twenty percent on our original plan that was going to go into effect at a high-risk level. We decided to do that at the moderate risk level. More airflow is better. And so we'll do that. We'll keep that in place now and not go back down as we were hoping to be able to do. At the instruction side, no material changes. You'll see that the words at all times for students' desk facing the same direction is no longer in the plan. That is to give teachers more flexibility even at the high-risk level to be able to have students moving around the classroom and not expecting them to keep students in rows and in a traditional setting that way. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is in Thursday's community briefing, there will be what we're calling a public health conversation published. It includes Dr. Sean Cook, who is one of the two district physicians. He's a pediatrician with a local practice. Mrs. Lisa Lontai, who's our middle school nurse, and Mr. Kevin Sumner, who's the Warren Township Health Officer. You can see the link on the screen right now, tinyurl.com slash Warren convo if you want to see it sooner. Otherwise, it'll be published on Thursday. This is a conversation with them about masking, infection control principles families can follow at home and at school and vaccines and why it's important for people to get vaccinated if they're eligible. They address some of the common questions people have asked about wearing a mask for a long period of time. What are the best kind of masks for this school setting? Are there differences between how we should approach Delta versus other variants? So they address all of that. It's about a twenty-minute video. We want to have the community to have access to the people who are giving us advice, our local health official, Mrs. Lontai, who's our school nurse and was the county, the president of the County School Nurses Association, and Dr. Cook, who's a local pediatrician. So I thought, we thought that would be a helpful resource. We're not going to play it for the meeting itself. But it's the clips will be available to you. It should already be live on YouTube at tinyurl.com slash Warren convo for those that want to watch it right now. And then it'll be published on Thursday in the community briefing as well. And then, as always, we still have our live email address, covidnineteen@warnteeboe.org for anybody that wants to submit questions about any topics related to return to school, COVID response, anything else. The way those questions work is when we receive them, they get forwarded to the appropriate person and they get built into our FAQ, which is on the district website. We'll also make sure that those answers are addressed in the parent information session on Thursday. That URL is on the screen as well, tinyurl.com slash info zero eight two six two one. There's no limit to the amount of parents that can sign up to participate live. But we will record the session. It's the session is, I believe, two to three P M. We'll record it and then get the link into the community briefing by four P M. That afternoon, so that if you can't attend live, you have the most up-to-date information available to you that afternoon, that evening, so that you're ready for next week, the week after, when students return to school. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Franco.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dr. Mill. And I would encourage you to to attend that information session on the twenty-sixth if you have questions or concerned as as most of those those of you that may have questions tonight. Your questions likely will not be answered. So I would encourage you to attend on the twenty-sixth where you will get direct feedback from from your questions. Okay, moving on to discussion. Board norms for communication and operations. You want to draw through the questions on this one?
Okay, so the board norms were circulated multiple times and and addressed. I think the questions that were received have been addressed. There are a couple of small recommended adjustments that were shared, crossing out the line about each community reviewing its goals on a quarterly basis, since they're all published now. Same thing with the minutes, since they're all published for everybody. And I think the only other thing, adding to the agenda, the current board and district goals, it's already included somewhere else, so we just removed it for repetitious sake. And then there's a clarification on, there's a sentence that says the chair will respond to public comments on behalf of the board and/or provide the superintendent with the opportunity to do so. And then in recognition of the recommendations that came out of the curriculum communications and technology committee several months ago, it now says, in the event of exceptional circumstances, meaning it's not the primary place for questions to be addressed by the superintendent, but it's a place for exceptional circumstances. I don't think there were any other suggestions unless I missed something from a board member to incorporate.
I'm not answering. I was just wondering if you minded, if the board minded, instead of saying in the event of exceptional circumstances, can we say where appropriate? Or I don't know. It seems exceptional is a higher bar than if you just have a random question that would be appropriate to answer the question. You could answer the question. And I don't know if the board would be open to that. That was my other comment.
Mrs. Jean.
I'm not being on Zoom. Is that what we're all thinking now? So I tried to get in earlier, but then I I wasn't muted and it became destructive and I left.
Mr. Rieger, help get you signed in here.
So if we could be all be on the same page here, Paul, you could speak.
Yeah, I'm not signing. I'm just going to speak very loudly.
Well, then no one's going to hear you. So here, take nine.
Say right now. Sure.
It's going to get loud.
Yeah, it's going to get loud when the minute it comes up.
Just keep turn your volume off. Turn your volume off and mute when you're not speaking. We can hear you in the room, so you don't need your volume on your computer.
All right. Give me a moment to do that while I'm not while I'm on Zoom. Progress, Steve. That's what happened before.
You unmute yourself. You're muted, so you have to unmute yourself.
Am I ready to go? Okay. The only question that I have is with regard to the addition of the language in event of exceptional circumstances. Whether or not we had, there had been any discussion at committee level or elsewhere as to what would constitute some exceptional circumstances. I'm just concerned about providing guidance to the presiding officer so that we don't put whoever is the presiding officer in a situation of having to on the spot kind of identify what might constitute an exceptional circumstance.
So there wasn't discussion in the committee?
You just need to mute your. Turn the volume off, please.
I would love to. Could somebody tell me how volume off goes there? My IP department is writing. Thank you, Todd. See, this was muted, but.
We're good?
Did that work?
Yes, success. So to answer that question, there there was no discussion at on the curriculum committee about different situations when the presiding officer would or would not respond. That wasn't a conversation that they had. Basically, the the guidance from school boards and from the consultant was that public meetings are meant for the public to observe the meeting and generally speaking, it's not that purpose, but I don't know what the definition of that would be.
Do we want to get into a discussion about the definition of extraordinary circumstances? Or is this is this allowable to be a judgment call of the presiding officer?
I'm good with the judgment call.
Straw poll on this? Okay with judgment of the presiding officer for extraordinary circumstances? I think that makes it. So the language as it's written, I think, is is okay. Anybody else wish have any, anybody else have any other issues they wish to discuss on board norms for board communication and operations? Okay, seeing non-committee reports. Mrs. Demagio.
Hi, good evening. Everybody can hear me. I'm unmuted. How's my volume? Yeah.
You're good.
Okay. Um.
Just speak up.
Yeah, okay. So we met August eighteenth last Wednesday from three to four. Mr. Kimmick had a lot of patience with us and answered a lot of questions. There's a lot of different wording now in the new through all the summer writing in the curriculum that every that the staff did. The anchor standards, best practices, each discipline has a set of practices. And I think was what was the most encompassing was the coding of performance expectations and each grade level has like a band expectation. The CUSAC requirements, you know, we they very much drill down into the curriculum with that. Also, we spent a lot of time discussing the newest statutes, the three point six A, them being the Amistad law, Holocaust law, and LGBT and disabilities law. And Mr. Kimmick and Dr. Mingle helped us all better understand specific requirements of our curriculum and how to appropriately place things at certain grade levels. And that was the bulk of our conversation, the the new laws having to do with those three topics. And Mr. Kimmick, you know, informed us of all the work the staff did over the summer with all of the new NJ S L S. That was it. It was a lot.
The finance operations, security committee met on Wednesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at five P M. We had a relatively brief meeting in relation to our previous meetings. We we kicked off by welcoming Mr. Hegel. So welcome again. Looked at our end-of-year balance analysis, including end-of-year actuals as they currently stand for the budget. And the committee does support creation of fund balance policy. This is a practice that we've had generally in the past, and this is pretty much going to lock it into or attempt to better define it into a policy. So we have something for moving forward to solidify that process. We did discuss pilots and we asked administration to see if they could seek out specifically how many pilots where they were in terms of the agreements, et cetera, for a future meeting. The committee briefly discussed the national school lunch program.
The committee briefly discussed the National School Lunch Program, including support for that. The the last item that we talked about was the referendum for 2021. It was a very brief meeting. Our next meeting is September 20th, 2021 at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Any other committee reports, Mrs. Zone? You're still muted, Mrs. Zone.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm pleased to share with the Board of Education that I heard earlier this month from the Warren Township Education Foundation that they had been fully reinstated as a 501(c)(3) charitable foundation. That was a complete reinstatement with no issues and no back taxes. So that is a the best possible outcome that they could have hoped for. At this point, they are moving forward. And I do want to share with the the public that the Warren Township Education Foundation continues to seek individuals who might be willing to help fill out their board as well as, of course, at this point, if anyone is looking for an opportunity to donate money to the Warren Township Education Foundation. They're now in a position to accept those donations. If you're interested, and I please encourage everyone out there in the public who has an interest in supporting the schools in Warren Township, to please consider supporting the Warren Township Education Foundation. You can find contact information on the district's website, which will direct you to the current contact for the foundation. They are in the process of establishing their social media presence and and websites and stuff. So for the for the moment, if you go to the district page on the Warren Township Education Foundation, you will find contact information there. So I again, I cannot more strongly recommend and and, you know, encourage people to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zone. Back to school committee met on Wednesday, but I think we've covered that in your presentation. Any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to public commentary. This is the first of two public commentary sections. You will have three minutes to to make your statement. Please state your name and address. I will attempt to give you 20 seconds. Notice I'm getting the clock up now. And please use the raise your hand feature with Zoom, and I will in the order in which your hand was raised. And if there's anyone in person that wishes to speak, please just while I would say step up to the podium, but it's, I'm not sure there's a point. Does anybody in the room like to make a statement? No. Moving over to Zoom. Mrs. Lettich.
Hi, Mariette Cheltovich, 18, King George.
I have to turn off. Okay, so you're muted, Mariette.
Just give us one second. We'll get it on the screen.
There, sorry. Thought I unmuted myself.
Okay, I can hear you now.
Mariette Cheltovich, 18, King George Road. I have three children, first, third, and fifth at ALT. I just want to point out, Mr. Franco and Mrs. Zahn, when you guys talk, it's very difficult to hear you. Whatever is going on with Mr. Brizzi and Dr. Mingle, we can hear them very well. So I don't know if it's just that your mics are further away, or I don't know.
I think it's it's different devices have better microphones.
Anyways, I like I couldn't hear anything Mrs. Zahn was saying. I'm sure it was all wonderful. I just had a commentary on the mask. I love Mr. Franco, I think I'm echoing because you're on. I'm muted. Not, I mean, not muted. Oh, that's so much better. Sorry. So I had a comment on the masks that the letter that you were going to potentially write to the governor. I think that's great. Personally, I don't care if my kids have to wear a mask inside school. They're used to it. It's fine. I think they should be when they're outside allowed to play normally with it off because transmission outside is very low. And even if you do get it, you're likely to get a lower viral load, meaning you're not gonna get as sick. But I also think that when you're writing the letter, it might be important to include the fact that it's not just about transmission rates. It's also about the hospitalization rates and the death rates. Which even though we have a higher transmission rate, if you look at sorry, my kids just entered. If you look at the ICU beds, we're still not even close to maximum capacity, which this is what all of the steps we were taking are for. It's about it's not about not getting sick. It's about people dying and the hospitals being overwhelmed. And right now, it does not seem to be the case in New Jersey, based on the graphs that I'm able to find. And that it's not just about transmission and that you might want to consider including that when you're petitioning the governor in terms of of the mask mandate based on municipality. It's also tricky because we're in Somerset County and Warren Bridgewater is huge and so is Bound Brook. And they're far more cramped than Warren schools are. So it is tricky to say, okay, well, we all have to follow the same thing based on our county when even though a particular town may not be seeing the same transmission rates. Or, like I said, it has to do with hospitalization and the death rate as well, which have decreased. Anyways, like I said, either way, my kids will wear a mask or not wear a mask depending upon what you say. Doesn't that part doesn't matter to me inside, outside. It's very brutal playing outside in a mask in the heat. In the winter time, not so much, but outside, it's it's awful. Anyway, have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Silver.
Am I unmuted and can you see me? Okay, I I just want to say thank you for writing this letter. One of my comments was going to be a little bit in disappointment that we haven't heard your opinion until now, although I haven't read it, but I have a few things I wanted to say regarding masks. First, I'm firmly against mask mandates in school. I'm not against masks in school. I'm against mandates for masks in school. If you want your child to wear a mask, by all means, do it, but no mandate. Kids are already safe. They're incredibly safe when it comes to COVID and teachers are vaccinated or will be shortly under the governor's mandate. There's been a total of 361 deaths, zero to 17 years, as of August 18th, per the CDC. That there are 73 million under 18-year-olds in this country. You can do the math, I'm sure. That's a really small percentage. And people will say, well, the Delta variant, the Delta variant, while more contagious, is not more deadly to children. Right now, there's 1,200 total cases in hospitals of children, 1,200. There's 73 million under 18. That's 0.0016%. It is safe for kids to be in school and it's safe for them to be in school without masks. And if this is the case, why not the flu? Influenza is far more dangerous to children overall, zero to 17, and we never had masks. And why are children allowed to be maskless all over the state? And 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 we are as well, because they have no power and they're easy to control. And unless you wear a properly fitted N95 mask for six plus hours, which you're not supposed to do, and children aren't allowed to wear a N95 mask, masks are purely theater. And while it's easy to point to these yahoos down south and the states and how terrible they are and how morally superior we are up here in the New York City metro. What are you gonna say when cases surge this winter? Which it undoubtedly will. And I'm saying this almost, you know, putting this to the governor right now. That it's not our fault? That it's just it would have been worse if we all didn't wear masks. This is just, it's gonna happen here, just like it's happened in the South. COVID is now endemic. It will be around for a long time and we cannot mask forever. And thank goodness, I don't have a kindergarten, a kindergartner or something, because if my kid, I was learning how to read and had to read, not see lips, not see the enunciation, not see any of that stuff. That would be crazy. So I was disappointed that I hadn't heard anything from the board. I'm happy to hear that at least we understand the majority board opinion as it relates to this letter. And lastly, I want to reiterate, no one is suggesting masks be banned in school. Nobody. Just let parents decide whether or not they want to have their child wear one, not the government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Mrs. Silver.
Sorry, didn't realize I was up. Heather Silver, 35, Quell Run. I am beyond exhausted from this battle and feels though I've been time worked back to August of 2020 when COVID was still new. I forwarded you dozens of articles as to why masking does little to help an already barely vulnerable population of children that are more likely to get the flu and become severely ill or die than get COVID. They actually have a similar chance of getting hit by a falling meteor than getting COVID and dying, so maybe we shouldn't be a risk going outside. You presented us little facts up till now, reasoning or common decency, but rather disappeared for a month at a time when we should be communicating more than ever to find the most humane solutions to this crisis. I sat on a three-hour call last week for the class action suit to the federal court asking for choice by parents and listening to other boards around the state that have spent countless hours meeting with their constituents to hear what their communities want. True partnership, and yet you refuse to even entertain the idea until now, until let alone acknowledge our emails. The goal was to protect the most vulnerable. Drug companies went to work finding vaccines that are now available to anyone 12 and over. If you choose not to get vaccinated, that's on you. No one is mandating against masks. Wear it if you feel compelled. Just don't allow our feckless bureaucrats to decide what is best for our kids and start representing all of us. The bigger question is, do we believe masks work? The scientific answer to that is no, in regards to the flimsy outfit coordinating ones that most wear. If you plan to provide a fresh N95-fitted mask to every child, I might see some use. Even then, they can't be worn for seven hours straight. In medical environments, they do use them for real protection with substantial breaks given because of their restricted nature. The school day isn't nearly long enough to allow for that, and I wouldn't want my kids further harmed by such an apparatus. Let's list the long-term psychosocial, social, biological, and immunological risks that masks have on children. Facial deformities, speech impediments, panic attacks, learning distractions. Many people report claustrophobic experiences, difficulty getting sufficient oxygen due to the natural resistance to inhaling and exhaling. This can lead to increased heart rate, nausea, dizziness, headaches. Would there be additional staff on hand to tend to all of these issues? This is a slippery slope from virus protection to mental breakdown. This is child abuse by the very definition, and you can look that up. At the outset of this pandemic, the WHO experts advised that use of face masks was not recommended as potential benefits are rather limited and the potential risk of self-contamination if used improperly. Moreover, the WHO stated that in a report, at present, there is no direct evidence of the effectiveness of universal masking of healthy people in a community to provide infection with respiratory viruses, including COVID-19. Contamination of the upper respiratory tract by viruses and bacteria on the outside of medical masks has been detected in several hospitals. Another research shows that a moist mask is a breeding ground for antibiotic-resistant bacteria and fungi which can undermine mucosal viral immunity. Now, those things will put our kids in hospitals with worse outcomes. For a population of children that are at far less than a 1% infection rate, explain how it's okay to spend hours with friends after school on sports teams.
It's three minutes.
I'll finish it afterwards.
Okay, I'm not sure if this is popping up in the order that I believe Linda D was next.
Hi, Linda Draper, 78, Briarwood Drive East. I guess I will say ditto to everything that Mr. and Mrs. Silver just said. I wrote a letter to the board, which I'm sure you received. I don't believe that in the governor mandating masks for every child, of course, if you want to put your child in a mask, that is fine. If anybody wants a mask, that is fine. I don't believe it should be mandated for the children eight hours a day. And as she just said, the research shows our our kids are not vulnerable to this. If you want your child to wear a mask, that is totally fine. But I don't wish my children to wear masks for eight hours a day. The other thing is that, Mr. Franco, what you said at the beginning of of the meeting about a survey, I don't believe I received that survey. And you said 67% of people said that they wanted the mask. I I do not want masks and I did not receive that survey, so I'd like to know what you.
I was conducted by mom at university. We had nothing to do with it.
Oh, okay. So it was it was it wasn't Warren Township. It was it was somewhere else. Okay. But um, I I just I just don't believe that it should be mandated for every child in the whole state to have to wear masks in school. Meanwhile, they can go around the whole town without the mask. It just doesn't make any sense. And even if they are going to require masks in school, if they can make it more reasonable, like if they're walking in common areas, wear them their magic masks. But maybe when they're at their desk that they don't have to wear it. I mean, it it's just not reasonable. And I have to say, if nobody else thinks this, that looking at you guys, I mean, I'm away right now, but looking at you guys speaking with these masks on is 100% ridiculous. I know you're doing what the governor told you you had to do, but it's just not reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Ferrera.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me? Yes, I'm echoing what I heard from Adam Silver, Heather Silver, and Linda D just before me. And I would like to urge the BOE to urge the governor to allow that these districts be able to make the decisions for their own students, their own staff. But most importantly, for the parents to be permitted to make decisions that's best for their own children and their own health. There isn't going to be a governor or any politician who's gonna come into my home and care for my child who may end up with any kind of of health issues, having to wear a mask for prolonged periods of time. I personally work for a large healthcare organization in the state of New Jersey with over 17 hospitals and long-term care facilities. And I receive daily reports of the number of patients that are currently admitted with COVID, those that are in critical care, and also those who are in ventilators. I can provide the data for the last month and even more than that to show you that the numbers of critical care or ventilators are in the teens in the state with nine million residents, teens. I'm talking 14, 15 people in a hospital that can can service over 35,000 to 40,000 patients. I echo again what the other parents have said before me so passionately. I'm not against masks. I'm against the mandate of masks for any individual parent, staff, member. If you feel safer wearing a mask, by all means, wear a mask. You are free to do so. I'm simply asking to be given the same freedom to make that decision for my children. Thank you.
Mrs. Ferrera, could you give us your address, please?
Yes, it's 21 Valley View Road.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Singleton.
Rachel Singleton, 22, Deerwood Trail West. I just wanted to explain why I wasn't there in person this evening, because I attended last time when you when you had your first in-person board meeting. And the reason is because I will not be mandated to by our governor to wear a mask in a school building. I object to it. I don't necessarily object to wearing masks, but I do object, as everybody else has said, to being told when I have to wear a mask coming to school. So that's why I'm not there in person. I echo the same sentiment as everybody else, so thank you very much for putting it on your agenda this evening to write to to the governor to ask for the choice so that parents can choose for their children. That's the right thing to do. I also wanted to ask about the curriculum committee that had met, and I was wondering if the comprehensive sexuality education was the curriculum to which was referred, being the one that was mandated by law last year that's now coming in. And I was wondering when and if parents can view that so that we can see at what age our children are going to learn about things that they probably shouldn't learn about until they can, you know, visit the movie theater without a a parent going with them. Particularly, I'm interested in learning for eighth grade, if they're going to learn about things that PG that they wouldn't be able to see in a PG 13 movie. And I'm I'm keeping it clean for the for the recording, because if you've read what what is in that document from the state, it's not something you really want to have a recording of on a on a video. That's me. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Okay, we'll just, we have three more hands up. Mrs. Taylor, Mrs. Villanueva, and Catherine. And then we'll allow Mrs. Silver to finish her comments and and then we'll move on. Mrs. Taylor. Good to see you again, Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you. Good to see you all. So I just want to lend my voice to the parents who agree that So I just want to lend my voice to the parents who agree that their children should, children, all children should be wearing masks in school. I think masks for everyone makes sense because we're thinking about our community. And I personally think you all look responsible and not ridiculous. We need to both protect the unvaccinated in our community, right? And I'm talking about children, not adults who have chosen to be unvaccinated, but children who can't be vaccinated, right? One child's death is too many for me in this community. And we get to death by transmission. So if we can avoid that, I think that would be smart. And, you know, I hear the other parents talking about low numbers of students or young people who are getting the virus. But I'm just, I just want to reiterate that I think as a community, I'm in favor of protecting the healthy and the unhealthy people in our community. And masks to me are a small, while uncomfortable, nobody likes it. I understand that, but until we understand the new virus and understand better what's happening, I think masks are a responsible way forward for all of us.
Sorry, Mrs. Villanova.
Hi, good evening. Courtney Villanova, 13 Briarwood Drive East. And I agree with Mrs. Taylor. I just want to provide an alternate perspective. So hopefully, unlike the parents of Wayne, we don't have to, you know, rally a poll after a letter is already sent. I have a daughter that is entering first grade next year, so she doesn't even have the option of getting vaccinated at this point in time. And I just feel like school should be a place where kids can go to be in a safe environment. And especially that there is no alternate virtual learning this year. I don't think it's safe to send her to a school where masks aren't being worn and she doesn't have the option to even be protected by a vaccine. So that's basically the perspective. I wanted to say the one other thing I'd like to add on the mask. I don't agree with that you can wear, that some people can, some people can't wear them. Respirators are to protect the people who are wearing them. And the cloth mask protects the other people. So if my kid's wearing a mask, they're actually protecting your kid. If your kid's not, then my kid isn't protected. So I work in a pharma, I'm an engineer at a pharma company. My company requires even the vaccinated to wear masks. We require our employees to be vaccinated. So business places, workplaces becoming more and more popular. I just think especially in schools where there's even no option for vaccination for some of these younger children, it's very important to wear masks at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Catherine.
Hello, this is Richard Lubek, not Catherine, 11 Jessica Lane Warren. And I'd like to thank the board. I would hope that a letter is sent to the governor regarding the mask usage. I believe it's a distraction to education. If I came into the class with sunglasses on, a teacher would definitely tell me to take those sunglasses off. We need a good communication. We need our younger students to be able to see enunciation. And I ran one little, one little caveat, which was I looked at the New Jersey Health Database, the data dashboard, I'm sorry. And that lists by each county, the number of cases that are positive. And then I can go to census.gov and I can also look at the population to that county. So with New Jersey being a diverse area, meaning Somerset County, you will still see the occasional person driving solo in a car wearing a mask. If you go to Monmouth County or Ocean County, you'll see thousands of people every day interacting shoulder to shoulder, nightclubs, bars, beaches, parks, fairs, amusement parks, you name it. We're not seeing a reflection in cases. This is the fourth wave of this virus pandemic. And it's going to surely lessen with time. We can all make an assumption that it might be worse, but we can't live our life in a way where we're assuming for the worst case outcome while we're we're having harm in other effects that we're losing here with test scores and education and so forth. Masks are not a zero harm effect, and people don't realize that. If they work, I'm a science and an engineer person. If they work, I look at the numbers. That would be great, but they just don't. It's like stopping an insect invasion with a chain link fence. You have to have them fit properly. They have to indent in your face. Otherwise, it's just propaganda. So what I would like the board to do is I would like the board to send a letter. I would like to see students in class normally so that we're teaching them not to be scared, not to fear life, which is a part of a virus, is part of life and fate. And I would like to move through that. Otherwise, I thank the board for taking any action on that topic. And I would also like to have some feedback on the agenda from the state regarding, I'm not sure, forgive me if I'm wrong, but the equal alliance that's bringing some different material into the classrooms when we have kids that we know are struggling in math and science, why we're tailoring a curriculum to support these other groups. I would like to get the basics done. I would like to make sure that children excel in math and science and history and English and other languages and music. And I just don't see at this time a need to bring that in. But that's obviously from the state, so that's a different situation. But the biggest point was across New Jersey being so diverse, we had a 10% case infection rate. I'm sorry, 10 seconds. 10% across every county in New Jersey except Cape May had a positive test rate. So that should just give some information on that. Thank you. Thank you for the time. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No worries. For those of you that do wish to comment publicly, I do ask you, please raise your hand and keep it up in Zoom. We have a few more hands up for people that already spoke. We won't let everyone have their say. So we'll modify my earlier statement. We'll let Mrs. Hazari speak. And then Linda D, raise your hand back again. We'll let Mrs. Silver go again. I don't know if Mrs. Villanova, you still have your hand up this peak again? If you don't, please put it down. Same thing with you, Mr. Lubek. So we'll let them have their say, but you know, please, just first of planning the meeting, you know, running the meeting, please put your hand up. Mrs. Hazari.
Hi, Marika Hazari, 23 Skyline Drive. It's great to see all of your faces. It's great to see the masks. I would like to, you know, take this opportunity to say thank you to everyone that's actually spoken because I find that sometimes, especially now as we're kind of distancing ourselves from one another still, we only hear the perspectives of the people that we surround ourselves with. So while I don't agree with much of what was said with regards to moving away from a mask mandate and with some of the things that were said regarding how masks do and do not work, I do appreciate hearing what people have to say because I think that's the only way that we can try to understand one another. And while I have no prepared remarks, I will say that I'm coming as a mother of three, all under the age of 12, as a physician and as a person who's very immunocompromised myself, and state that I think that we should stop the fighting over things that we know are shown to save lives, even if it's just one or two lives, that is one life too many. As a physician, we train to save people and people come to us in their time of need. It seems as though people have a hard time trusting when we're giving them preventative things, whether it be weight loss or mask wearing or vaccinations. But when they really need us, they overwhelm us, they overwhelm our hospitals, our ICUs. Our children are precious. We are seeing case rates not being so high in our state because of our high vaccination rates. And we know that only children 12 and above can be vaccinated. So while we don't have a vaccine approved yet for children under the age of 12, let's just wear our masks. Let's stop fighting it, stop wasting our time and energy. Let's listen to what people who have devoted their lives to doing, like the people at the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, the WHO, not the WHO, that's a band, and others that really have spent so much of their time ensuring that people survive through daily things that go beyond a pandemic. I think that we have gone so far into this and have just lost sight of the simple things that we can actually do to make a difference. I say we, by all means, if, you know, draft a letter if that's what everyone would like to do. It's not going to harm anything, but keep the mandate or keep the mandate in place because public health is individual health. Individual health is public health. Like one of the parents had said earlier, you know, wearing a mask isn't just protecting my child, but my child wearing a mask is actually protecting your child. Your child not wearing a mask is endangering my child. When they all wear their masks, the efficacy of the masks go up. And yes, I'm a strong proponent of wearing well fitted masks that do not have to be N95 masks. They're still shown to, you know, to decrease transmission. And, you know, I just applaud you guys. I know you have a lot of work ahead of you, and I know that you've been doing this tirelessly. Whether or not you've been communicating with us daily is another story. But I, you know, I'm thankful for all of the time and effort and attention that you've put into this. And I'd just like to say, you know, keep up your good work, put a mask on, and we'll all ride through this together.
Thank you, Mrs. Hazari. Like I said, we're not going to allow just people just to keep piling on with the hand up. So the names that I mentioned before will allow you to speak. And then Nikki, if you don't mind waiting till, well, Nikki, why don't you go now? And then, so it's going to be Nikki, Mrs. Silver. Looks like Linda has dropped her hand and that will be it.
Hey, Mark, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, great, thank you. It's actually Steve, not Nikki. I'm on her iPad. Okay, so I have a very, very limited comment. So I agree with almost everything that was just said. And I understand that there's a lot of strong feelings about this. What I would say is once vaccines are available for children under 12, I think I would feel a lot differently about mask wearing and what we're doing in schools. But until we are, I think we have to recognize that the idea that COVID doesn't affect children, statistically, it's a lot less, but the idea that it doesn't affect children is frankly silly. And I think this disease itself, we really understand very little about. And it would appear that the effects of long COVID are disproportionately higher in children than they are in adults. So I think while we don't understand a whole lot of anything and while we don't have a vaccine available for children, I would obviously be a very strong advocate for mask wearing, even though I understand that a lot of people object to that. And I would say as well that I think it's, well, I respect everybody's views on the topic. Until a vaccine is available for the under 12s, I think it's actually irresponsible for the board and the governor to do anything other than mandate mask wearing. And so I, you know, like the previous speaker, I respect everyone's opinions. So I thank you for allowing me to speak, but really I'm true to that. That's all I wanted to say. So I see the rest of my time off.
Just give us your address. Mr. Tor. For the record.
Say again, sorry?
Your address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, 12 Nottingham Way, Warren.
Okay, Mrs. Silver.
I'm terribly sorry if I've insulted anyone by using a word rather than an anagram. But if I had less than, or if I had more than three minutes, I could get through a lot more information, but only other boards of education give more than three minutes as I've watched for the past several months while I've attended other board meetings. I do want to finish what I did have to say. For a population of children that are currently at far less than a 1% infection rate, explain how it's okay to spend hours with friends after school on sports teams sponsored by the schools, having sleepovers all while unmasked. But in school where they should be focused on learning, they should basically be muzzled. Right? COVID only attacks in school or walking from the door of a restaurant to the table, but now while sitting in a movie theater or a concert. This really is one super smart virus that I'd love to get a part of. I close by imploring you again to support the class action suit I sat and listened to at no cost to you because that part's already been handled. Show our governor we will not stand for his bullying tactics. Bullying that you so boldly point out has no place in our schools, just like mask mandates. I say this because I can be told that my opinion is wrong, that one life is too many, that anything. But when do we get to a point where there's a certain percentage our children should be taught is acceptable risk and is not? Because that changes the whole metric of our whole world when we start teaching our children that everything in life is perfectly safe. And you need to compare risk to reward. And for 99.999% of our children to become educated properly in a proper environment, being able to speak properly, you can see my mouth, you can see how I feel about this, and I want my children to feel the same way. Children that are afraid of speaking publicly, if anyone saw the high school board of ed meeting last week, this is all unscripted now that I get a whole extra three minutes. Last week's high school board of ed meeting had a group of students arguing for a club they wanted. Not one person in the public could hear them because they were put in front of a microphone with a mask on. And they, you could tell they had fear of standing up there speaking. And yet they were put in an environment that made them even more self conscious for how they were supposed to speak. So you have children, and by the way, I just want to make sure I point out, I have a child that just ended elementary school. He is not eligible for a vaccine. I have one in high school. I am willing, and maybe that makes me an irresponsible parent, oh, well. But I am willing to take that minute chance that his tiny little chance of getting a cold from this becomes an issue. And him transmitting to an adult is the adult's fault for not getting vaccinated. It's not his fault, and he should not have to suffer for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Those of you that have comments, please, you'll have to wait till the second round of the commentary. We're going with the, with the agenda. More consideration, are there any topics that a board member wishes to pull for discussion or separate vote? Mr. Brizzi?
Could I pull C1 for a separate vote, please? Yes, please.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Mark, just wanted to discuss.
Before.
Before.
Yeah, let's do it now.
Just administratively, we're sending a letter.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have to draft a letter that encompasses, you know, kind of the basic gist of what came out of the back to school committee. And formulate it.
So when we passed the resolution, I think it was, was it May or June? We basically just took the resolution language and added a, you know, the factual information about this was the Warren Board of Education resolution, and we just gave that language. And then sent it to, just so everybody in the public's aware, that went to the governor and all level elected officials that represent Warren Township.
So the warning that we have. So pretty much the letter we read here on B4.
Right, that we are asking the governor's office to get rid of the mask mandate on a statewide basis and allow local districts to make the decisions based on certain metrics that need to be met. Which is, which, you know, in all honesty, was a compromise. Because we had both sides of the, we were both sides of the fence on this with not different members of the committee.
Yeah.
Right, so members of the committee were just wanted myself included. We're pushing for just a full rebuttal. Whereas all the members of the committee were in favor of keeping the mandate. So this is, so this is kind of a battleground that comes down to the committee that we think has, will have support of the board. Right, because I think if we went one way or the other, maybe we don't have that.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. So in effect, can I paraphrase by saying, this will be asking the state to not make the decision, but we as the board would make the decision.
Well, it allows us to make the decision as long as there's established protocols to what you need to get to.
Right.
It would be, it would be. It would be a metric.
Your presentation document, right?
Right, that's what led to that discussion was, you know, that's essentially what we announced last month was that we would have a metric based system based on local conditions.
And the metric basis. You didn't allow us the ability to implement.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're just asking that we are allowed to use the policy that we created in order to. And again, no one's getting. And again, no one's getting it in their way, right? And so, and so this is a compromise that comes out of the committee that was recommended to the board, that is acceptable to administration, that we think. Any other?
C8, movement of the guide. I think this is one of two times a year that the board approves these movements. And I just wanted to offer congratulations to those staff members and thank them for certainly all the service. That's a big career milestone and we as a, as a district benefit from, from their hard work. So thank you to them and congratulations to them. Thank you.
They can pull out then.
That was C1, Mr. Breezy. A motion to approve items for board consideration A1 through A4, B1 through B4. Motion to approve items for board consideration A1 through A4, B1 through B4, C2 through C17, D1 and D2.
Do you have a second from Mrs. Clark?
So what I'm going to suggest as we call the roll is I'll call your name and then, so I just leave my mic on. I'll repeat back the vote so the audience at home can hear. Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi votes yes. Mr. Breezy. Mr. Breezy votes yes. Mrs. Clark. Mrs. Clark votes yes. Mrs. DiMaggio. Mrs. DiMaggio votes yes. Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein votes yes. Mrs. Zahn. Mrs. Zahn votes yes. And Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Franco votes yes. The motion's passed 7-0.
Motion to approve item for board consideration C1.
All second.
Right, so this is a motion to approve item C1. Mr. Bishi. Mr. Bishi votes yes. Mr. Breezy. Mr. Mr. Breezy abstains. Mrs. Clark. Mrs. Clark votes yes. Mrs. DiMaggio. Mrs. DiMaggio votes yes. Mr. Weinstein. Mr. Weinstein votes yes. Mrs. Zahn. Mrs. Zahn votes yes. And Mr. Franco. Mr. Franco votes yes. The motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished business? New business?
Also saying one, second round.
Same, the conference section, however, you will have the ability to speak on any topic you wish, not just agenda items. Mrs. Nicholson. Again, reminder, please turn on your camera, please state your name and address.
Hi, this is actually Jeff Nicholson, 31 Livingston Avenue, Warren, New Jersey. First of all, I'd just like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to express our opinions this evening. And I wanted to take the opportunity to, you know, come out in favor of the masking in schools and universal masking in schools. I think it's incredibly important for us to keep all of the children safe. And the problem is when masking is optional, as some other people have pointed out, those who don't mask are actually risking the children who are masked. I also know that this is, you know, a really emotional topic. So as a professional scientist, I prefer to distance myself from the emotions and really take a look at the data. And I've heard a lot of facts or I should say statements being thrown around about masking this evening. But the science on masking has changed enormously in the past year or so. Since December of last year, more than 200,000 articles have been written in peer-reviewed scientific journals on, on COVID-19. And the point that they're peer-reviewed is really important because it means that other scientists have taken a look at the results and verified them. And the consensus in the peer-reviewed scientific community is that masking works and it prevents the community spread of COVID-19. And it's really important to understand that it's not just N95s that prevent community spread of COVID-19, but it's all forms of masking. Some are less effective than others, some are more effective than others. But the scientific consensus is that masking is effective. And so if our goal is to keep all of the children safe, I feel we really need to have all of the people masked in schools. And so again, thanks for the opportunity to express my opinion this evening.
Could you just repeat your address for us, sir?
31 Livingston Ave.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barsky, I believe was next.
How do I do that?
You're on, the camera on.
Hi, hi, Alana Goldstein Barsky here. I just wanted to say, 40 Gates Avenue, Warren, New Jersey. I just wanted to say thank you to my friends and fellow residents for caring about all of the kids here. It's really important. And when I was on the school board, my number one goal was to give a safe space for all kids, whether or not they could have a vaccine, whether or not they were healthy or they had a learning disability or they were an exceptional student. I cared about every single one of them. And I'm very surprised at this board that thinks that their personal opinion is more important than public safety and public health. And to any of those people who want to look at whatever they find on the internet and say that that's the truth, well, you know, to me, I'm just going to say that I reiterate everything that Jeff said, that Ayanna said, and that any doctor or real scientist knows to be true. And I'm sorry that there are folks that don't want the government to tell us what to do, but the government tells us to do a lot of things. And, you know, it's all because for the good of the, the younger generations who you are supposed to be taking care of. And it's really disappointing that a letter is going out to the governor asking that you know more than doctors and scientists to make that decision for my child. So thank you so much for your time tonight. Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Nicole Gamiro.
Hi, Nicole Gamiro, 234 King George Road. I just wanted to bring up the fact that I've noticed a lot of the folks that are very strongly against mask wearing are also the folks that were very strongly on top of the board and the township to get kids in school and staying in school and in school full-time, in-person learning. And as a reminder, as transmission rises, that means more people are going and more kids are going to be having to quarantine, which means that they're going to have to go remote and have time outside of school. And I just, I didn't hear that today and I, and I know that that was a huge fight this past year. And I don't think that that has all of a sudden gone away. And so I just encourage people that maybe feel very strongly about mask wearing. It's not just about the masks. It's also about what that impact is going to have as more and more kids are transmitting and more and more kids have to be quarantined. Thank you.
Okay, Catherine, I think that's. The name Catherine on here? Are your hands still up, maybe from a four? Is that us? Yes? That's you? Yes.
I'm sorry. Just a quick, just a quick follow-up. I know we only have three minutes and I was a little long-winded, but I'd just like to reiterate. I, I've heard a lot of the commentary about masks versus non-masks. It's not a zero harm effect. That's the one point I want to make. The second point I want to make is that I'm a scientist, I look at data. If I look at the infections per county, with New Jersey being so diverse religion, activities, Bergen County, most people assume that had the most cases, but that also had the highest percentage of, that also had the highest population at a million people. If you look per county basis, you have 10% positive cases. So you have a, a complete area where people are meeting every single day with children's sports activities neck to neck. And yet somehow that virus maintains a 10% infection rate across the whole state of New Jersey. So you have areas where people are wearing masks every day. You have an 85 or 90% mask compliance, and yet you still have 10% of the positive cases. So that's the only consideration I'd want to ask for in the board sending a letter to the state, emphasizing that they're not zero harm. We don't have data on putting a child in a mask for a whole year. Any long-term effects are going to be from this and people are overlooking that. If it was safety and it was safe to do, fine, that would be one thing. But if it's not and we can't prove that, then we should send that letter and enunciate that fact that there's something else going on here. A virus is going to follow a natural mathematical progression. It's not going to do something different because you stand six feet apart. These are, these are particles that are, that are, that are 100 times smaller than the diameter of your hair. So pluck a dia, pluck a hair out, look at the diameter of it. These are particles that are 100 times smaller and there, there's millions of them. So that's the only thing I'd like to say. I'd also like a follow-up on that equal advocacy with the curriculum. If Mr. Mingle, Dr. Mingle could also comment on that, it would be much appreciated, how he's going to fit that into the curriculum of the lower school and the middle school. Thank you, board. Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Thank you. I believe any questions will be answered in the information session on the 26th. Is that correct? If you have questions, and then as Dr. Mingle earlier stated, put them in writing and he'll address them at that meeting. Mr. Silver.
Hi, Adam Silver, 35 Quail Run in Warren. I just wanted to respond primarily to Mr. Nicholson, Mrs. Hazari, Ms. Barsky, I think it was, Mrs. Barsky. This is Hazari and Mr. Nicholson. I, I get your doctors, physicians, quote scientists. I still, you know, and, and you could cite all the peer studies you want. Maybe you could provide me some data. It's still incredibly rare for a child to be falling ill from COVID, seriously falling ill from COVID, much less than normal influenza in prior years. So again, I am not against wearing masks. I'm against the government mandating that we wear a mask. And I think there's an important difference because why, if, if these were so effective, why do individual states that have mask mandates or individual areas that have mask mandates really follow the same path infection-wise as those that don't? I mean, and if it were so cut and dry, why isn't the governor mandating indoor mask mandates across the whole state everywhere that you go? Because it's only the children that, that, and you're going to say, well, they're not vaccinated. But again, they're not vaccinated because they, they have very low infection fatality rate and also just general infection rate, as well as teachers are vaccinated. I've never seen a situation where the fear of individuals getting sick, not so much our children, but other individuals getting sick has impacted our children so much. And I, I, I find it insulting that we're basically told, you don't know enough. You haven't done your homework. You haven't done your research. Listen, and I, and, and I hear it couched in a nice way. Oh, I'm all for everyone trying to get along as long as you do it my way. That's kind of what I heard from everybody. I guess I feel like some individual decisions should be allowed to be made here. And, and if you, you know, you always have the option to homeschool your children. But I think the impact to children in this school district and around the state and around the country this past year and a half has been dramatic and it, and it really needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. I'd remind everyone that's speaking publicly to please direct your comments to myself or the board generally, but please direct them to me. Linda D.
Hi, Linda Draper, 78 Briarwood Drive East. So I appreciate everyone's comments and the doctors that have come on. But, and I asked this question months ago, what is the end game with this? I mean, people are going to get sick. This is a virus. We're not going to eradicate it. We need to learn how to live with it. So is the answer going to be that we all need to, and we don't all need to, it's just the kids. It's not a mask, it's not a statewide mandate. It's just in the school. So again, what, what is the end game with this? And if you look at the data and for the doctors who's, if this is not my opinion, you've got to the CDC website and look at the amount of children that are hospitalized every year from the flu and COVID. And the flu, there's more deaths and more hospitalizations for children with the flu influenza than COVID. Yet we were never wearing masks. We're not going to be wearing masks. Or is the solution that they want us to wear masks for the rest of our lives? Like, I just don't, I don't understand the logic behind this. And I forget what Karen pointed out, but it, it's, it's not just being sick. The kids may get sick, they may get COVID and they'll get sick. The chances of them being hospitalized or dying from it are very slim to none. Does that mean like, oh, I don't, I'm saying it's okay for my child to get sick? Children are supposed to get sick. They're supposed to get strep throat. They're supposed to have 103 degree fevers because they build immunity that way. They're going to get COVID, they're not going to die. Most of them are going to be fine. We know who dies from COVID, immune, immunocompromised, the elderly, blah, blah, blah. You know, again, that's not my opinion. Look at the data, go to the CDC website and look at it. I don't need to skew, skew a bunch of data to you. You guys can all go to the CDC website and look at it yourself. These are not, it's not my opinion. You can go and look at the numbers and it just doesn't make sense to have all of these children masked up. Again, mental health. So for the doctors, the physicians out there who say that the masks work, for they're not, they're not going to get a cold, they're not going to get sick. Yeah, they might get sick. What about the mental wellbeing of not seeing people's faces, faces, seeing smiles and learning in a regular, normal environment? What is more important? As somebody said earlier, I would rather take my chances of the point, oh, 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 whatever percent it is, that my kids go on masks and have a normal environment in school. That's how I feel. I don't think that I'm putting my children's lives at risk or any other child, the majority of children in the school by my child not wearing a mask. I, I don't think that's my opinion. I think that's fact. And if you look at them, the data, you will see that yourself. It, it's not, it's not really difficult. And one life, yeah, one, one life is one too many. But we, again, we know who, we know who dies from this. You, you know, you need to use your own judgment then. Not, not 100% of the population have to do this for a handful of people. Thank you.
Okay, I think, I think we have one, two, three, four, five people left. If you wish to make a public comment, please raise your hand in Zoom now. If, I will let the next person speak. Whoever's hands are up at the end of that three minutes, they'll be the only people to speak. So please use the raise your hand feature. Don't wait till the last minute. But we have five people waiting now. If you do wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature. Mrs. Jelitovic.
Hi, sorry, Maria Jelitovic, 18 King George Road, three kids, ALT, first, third, fifth. Anyways, I, last spring, we went through an enormous amount of changes in terms of how for the kids, they went from being hybrid to being full day, to switching classrooms, to like to being in, having different teachers. As a parent with somebody with a child that has extreme anxiety, all of these changes have a significant impact on their mental, on, on that, on my child's mental health. And I would ask that the board consider that when we are talking about like all of our protocols, that the majority of kids are incredibly flexible. I would say like 80% of the kids are totally fine with everything that happened. They're, they're, they're going to be fine. They're going to bounce back. But there's a percentage of kids who are not. And if there's a way for us to, and I will actually reach out to the guidance counselor. In the past, I prefer to keep this at home rather than through the school. But if there's a way for you to notify in advance, not just like a week or like, like, and how are we going to prepare the kids in school when they're going to be changing? Not necessarily every kid needs to be. how and how are we going to prepare the kids in school when they're going to be changing? Not necessarily every kid needs to be prepared. But this had significant impact on my child and I'm sure that there are other children who are also impacted as my own health professional that we see was over inundated with helping other kids. So please consider that when you are making changes that this has an impact on a select few. We don't necessarily need to broadcast to everybody, but if there's a way to have parents like myself whose kids are less flexible, who have a higher like uh, who have anxiety, really it's anxiety or who are depressive or who have other mental health impacts. If you could let us know in advance or if we could get a way to work through it with the kids without it being obvious in school, because that's another, that's one of the reasons why I kept it out at home, because my child doesn't want to be singled out at school for being different. They would rather be able to, they have to keep it all together while they're in school and then they come home and bad things happen. This is, and that's okay. I I would like that for them to do that, but there's got to be a better way to handle changes. I don't think that this is going to be a year of us being completely fluid with like normal. And I I really can't have another year with my child's mental health being com- compromised the way that it was. It's devastating to watch your child be. I I I I don't even want to say it out loud because people who like, it it's just devastating to watch your child's mental health deteriorate. And I hope that nobody other know of their parents too. Like I said, this doesn't affect everybody. So please find a way to reach out to some of those other people. I know myself this year, I will make sure the guidance counselor knows so that we can be. Um, it's it it matters. All the changes matter. Oh, also, I have a question. Are we still doing all of the, it looks, I can't tell from the thing, are we still doing all the sterilization? Like I said, I don't care if you want my kids to wear a mask, fine, they'll wear a mask. But the over sterilization, this isn't really healthy. Are we spraying down every surface a kid touches? Are they going to be? It look like from the thing that they're going to be allowed to interact normally with each other, look like you didn't say that you were giving flexibility for teachers to be able to have group work. My kids just want to be able to interact with other kids.
The information session on the 26th, I would encourage you to attend.
I will.
Okay, we we have six people left. We're going to limit it to those six people. We have Mrs. Silver, Mrs. Singleton, Mrs. Chojoki, Mrs. Hasari, Mrs. Ferrera, and then Mrs. Chu. And that will be, um, I'll be on the public commentary. So Mrs. Silver.
Hi, I'd like to start on a whole new topic. I'd like to thank Mrs. On for her acknowledgement of the Warren Township Education Foundation. My understanding in the almost 11 years I've been in the district that this has been, and I've watched it multiple times, be attempted to be restarted. Oh, I'm sorry, Heather Silver, 35, Crow Run. I have time now. I have watched this attempt to be restarted multiple times. I have attempted to get involved every time and somehow been shut out. And luckily I have now begun working for the township. And in a just happenstance of a meeting was asked if I knew anything about this and I'm glad I did and I'm glad that I've been able to accrue a a group of people that are really motivated and excited to make this happen. And I am grateful and honored that Mrs. On is our liaison and we are able to have her as our resource to the board and as positive an influence she has been for this. I really hope the education foundation is able to bring as much to our community as it had in the past, to my understanding, when it last ended in the late 90s, early aughts. Now I'll go on to my next couple of things. It seems every scientist in this debate sees it differently. And I I don't know, I'm not a scientist. I'll be honest, I'm an artist. Science is supposed to be an understood kind of constant that there is no debate over, yet there's a whole lot of scientists debating that their opinion is right and the other scientist is wrong. So maybe someone could explain that to me. I'd also like to understand why every country seems to see this differently. You know, the United States is seeing it one way. There's countries that have their whole, you know, community on lockdown. There's other countries that are going about it in the normal world. So if this is really just all about the basic science, then I think all the scientists need to get on the same page. Because in any other field, everybody gets on the same page, but somehow science seems to manage to get away from that. Um, I also heard a mention of quarantine being an issue and they don't want to see that happen again. Maybe I missed something in a change, but my last understanding was quarantining is no longer a a a concern. So that shouldn't be anyone's, you know, worry that their child's now going to have to quarantine because my uninfected child that has a sniffle is going to some way infect their child. Um, I also want to make sure that everyone understands that positive cases do not mean deathly ill or death. There's a difference. We could keep testing every single day. And every day we're going to find dozens, thousands, hundreds, whatever of cases. That doesn't mean every single one of them requires hospitalization, doesn't require that they need a ventilator, and it doesn't mean they're going to die. There's a difference. And the majority, the 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 99.999% majority is in that majority where they're not going to die. So I also want to make sure that personal election agendas do not come into this in any way. Knowing we have agendas, we have elections coming up in November. And if people want to spew their rhetoric on what they feel is their platform in a different setting, I don't want to hear that at a board event meeting. Other than that, I do want to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to speak.
Mrs. Silver, that's that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't believe anyone sitting on this board is running again. So not sure what you are referring to. Mrs. Singleton.
Rachel Singleton, 22, Dewitt Trail West. I wanted to address all the participants of the meeting and say, parents, please support your PTOs going forward. Please pay dues, become members of your PTO in your school. They need your money. They need your money desperately. The funding for the PTOs that used to do food days has been nuked. We can't run food days and food days was our income revenue source, knocking on 25 cents, adding it onto the cost of a pizza slice of pizza or 50 cents onto a mac and cheese, that type of thing. That's not going to happen this year, so we need your money. PTOs in all the schools are desperate for funds. So lots of lots of PTOs do matching, company matching. And I'm sure most of the PTOs accept Venmo, they accept Zelle, they accept checks. And we also accept all forms of free labor. So if you want to do something and volunteer for the PTOs, do please step up because we really, all of them do need your help. I'm talking mainly from the point of the middle school because our our funding really did come from the, uh, really did come from the food days and and we can't run that anymore. So we do need your support to help us. We are getting $10,000 from the district, but we do need your support because membership fees are what drive the activities and the participation. And we are all about the kids. So everything we do is about enriching their experiences in in the schools. So taking that hat off. I want to also to the person who said real scientists disagree with me, as it me, the person who said that. Real scientists disagree with each other. Real scientists just go from the data. And as we can see, everyone can read and read what they want into the data. And there are lies, damn lies and statistics and statistics come from data. So real scientists don't just agree with one side of an argument. Real scientists. They have a difference of opinion too. So that's what I would like to say there. Also, I saw a real scientist on YouTube called Byron Brindle, Dr. Byron Brindle. And he did a demonstration of wearing a surgical mask and he explained the size of a COVID molecule and the size of the weave of a mask. And even after wearing five masks, he could still, when he breathed through his mask, he could still make a condensation on his glasses. So I don't know if the answer is to wear six masks or no masks. But they were surgical masks and he put them on. So I am not against masks per se. I am against a mask mandate. And I also wasn't sure. I must have missed, did you take the vote on before? Because I heard it was pulled, but then I I didn't hear what what the vote was on that. So thank you very much. Choice is important and it's what your country was founded on, the right to choose your freedom. Thank you.
I think you two points of clarification. One, yes, beef was voted on with the rest of the agenda items. It was not pulled for a separate vote. And my comment about members of the board not running, I meant from this election cycle. I didn't mean to speak for anyone whose term goes beyond this year. So just as just as point of clarification.
I think it was a member of the audience that commented.
I'm sorry.
That comment, I think, was aimed at a member of the audience.
Mrs. Joke.
Hi, this is Jacqueline Joke, nine Heritage Drive. I just wanted to you know, add into the commentary here. I myself am a physician. I am not a preventive health medicine specialist. I'm not an infectious disease specialist. But I'm a physician and I am a mother. I actually happen to be a rehabilitation physician. So I see people that are in car accidents, bicycle bicycle accidents. I see traumatic spinal cord injuries. I see traumatic brain injuries. So as far as preventive medicine and preventive health, seat belts and helmets that have been mandated. And as far as mask wearing, you know, I understand that people may be upset with mandates. And if they want to fight the government on that, that's their right. And I think they're welcome to do that. But I think for us as a community, you know, we are a community that's trying to solve a problem together and work together as a community to make all of our communities members comfortable and have our children educated. And I think unfortunately, I get frustrated that we're fighting over masks. When really, I feel like we need to be prioritizing getting our kids educated fully, full days in school. You know, I'm hoping that that is what is happening this year. You know, that's what we're working toward. But you know, hopefully that we can come, we have a system in place where our kids are learning to read, they're learning their math curriculums. They're learning what they need to be learning because children were not achieving what they should have been achieving last year in the chaos that unfolded. And I think, you know, we just need to work together as a community to support our children as well as recognizing the mental health issues that that, you know, families are struggling with. Another thing is, as far as travel mandates. I'm not sure if that has been discussed at all in regards to this early return to school that we have compared to typical years and the old travel mandates that were removed, you know, is that still in effect? And is that going to prevent some of our children from going back to school on September 1st? Now that you're you're, I think you mentioned about even at low risk, there's going to be the the screening questions is travel outside of you know, what what are the travel issues, I guess? And you know, I'm just hoping that as a community, we can work together to maximize the education structure and not spend the whole year fighting over masks. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Chiki. Mrs. Ferrera.
Vanessa Ferrera, 21, Valley View Road. Uh, I heard some of my fellow residents who advocated for the masks say that the efficacy of one child or one individual reduces if another one is not wearing a mask. And for the life of me, I simply cannot wrap my mind around how that could be true. The guilt trip for anyone saying that we need to do this for a community is not just horrible, but it's absolutely incorrect. A mask is over one individual's face. A vaccine is injected in one person's body. My mask wearing or not, my vaccine status or or not having a vaccine has zero effect on anyone else. A vaccine protects only the individual. A mask only protects the individual for a very short period of time. So for also the, um, those that seem to be advocating for the mask mandate, I only hear the the address them addressing the the threat as COVID, as if that's the only health concern that we have. And so many other folks here have addressed the, the issue that we have is not just COVID. It's about a whole lot of other infectious diseases, other viruses, mental and emotional health. There is simply no data out there that can tell us the impact of wearing a mask for prolonged period of time, month and years. Because as a community, especially for the children, there is no data. There is no five year telling me how my children will will behave after having to wear a mask for their entire day at school. So for anyone here to tell me that my child's not going to suffer health, mental, emotional issues for having to wear a mask for prolonged periods of time, it without any end in sight, it's just untrue. So from the first day that I had, I've ever heard the word COVID, the guidelines keep changing, whether it's the FDA, the CDC, the American Pediatrics. Later on, they they tell us today, here's the guideline tomorrow. Oops, sorry, that was safe not again today. And then they go back to it again. One mask, two masks, no masks. The list of drugs that are approved by the FDA and later on proven to have caused tremendous effect, harm and death is infinite. So listen to any prescription medication commercial that you see out there. Here's the first 10 seconds of what it will be treating and the next 30 to 60 seconds of all the things that it can do, including kill you. So my point is allow the parents to make the decision for their children. Want to put a mask on your children, by all means, put a mask on your child. Put two, put three. It it won't affect my child, just like my child not wearing one will not affect yours.
Sorry, Mrs. Chu. Mrs. Chu, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Miss Chu.
Good to see you. Glad to be back in Warren. I want to say that the the mask issue is a very contentious issue, obviously. And Mr. Franco started the meeting, giving some statistics on how contentious this issue is on more than for some of the data that came out half, it's about half divided, half the community is against and half the community wants it. And so I'm not going to get into to that, but I am disappointed that the board feels the need to take a position on this issue when they know how divided the community is on it. And so to possibly open the door for to go against the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC guidelines. I believe like if individuals want to sign a petition with the governor, then by all means do so, but I am disappointed that the board feels the need to do that. That's just my comments. Thank you.
Public commentary there. Yeah, the meeting, we're moving to executive session, motion to move into executive session. You have to read the thing.
Whereas the
They're here there.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 10411 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education turns to closed session. Depending on delegation or contract negotiation and or matters of attorney client privilege. Action will not be taken upon return to public session. Selective meeting that anticipated to be approximately 20 minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of disclosed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
I second that. Did I make the motion? I'll second that. All those in favor going to the executive session? All those in favor going to the executive session? Opposed, abstentions? The board is not.
We're going to go to room one, just so that there's no concern with microphone. It'll be in room. If you're, if you're bringing.
Motion to go back to public session?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? You want to make a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, closed? Meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. There you go.
What is it called? The gavel?
Yeah.